I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 17th, 2013 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Mrs. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Mr. Florence and Mr. Gaines did call in and say they wouldn't be here. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the city council chambers. Just a quick note, if you're planning to talk as a proponent or an opponent during any public hearing, if you do us a favor, there is a sheet in the back when you first came in. If you could fill that out, just so we can have spelling of names right, that would help us a lot. And I'll re- So with that, Mr. Oh, we've got a presentation tonight. The Mayor's Youth Council is here. If you guys want to go ahead and give your present- if you'd share with us your names, that'd be great, too.
Is it on? Okay, it's on. Okay. Yeah, it's lighting up. Okay. Hi, I'm Leah Pfeiffer with the Mayor's Youth Council.
I am Levi Paino with the Mayor's Youth Council, too.
We're both Youth Council members. We just brought a presentation to show you guys on what we've been working on. And this is a project that we've been working on for a few years, so. It's okay. And up on the board is our mission statement. What we've been doing is road cleanup. Our location is on Shrim Road from 72nd to 84th.
Yeah.
Just got some pictures here. So when we go out every month, we split up into three different sections and kind of cover it as a team. We each go on the one side, far side, and the middle. And we get the chance to kind of lead our own little group and make sure everything's going all right. Take trash bags with us and get to go pick up trash. There's just some pictures of us. So we try to- we go out there every month, so we keep it pretty clean, I think. So makes Papillion look better. And you have anything to say, Levi?
Um, we also try to pick up as much as we can. If we can't get it, then we probably- well, if we can't get it, then we have to leave it. But we mostly pick up, like, the big chunks, whatever's in the plants, we pick up. And we do it every- we do it in wintertime, summer, and spring. So every month and every season of the months.
We try to make it out there regardless of weather conditions.
Yeah. We just do it no matter what.
There's just some more pictures. Does anyone have any questions?
Why the picture and road?
It was just the road that we adopted, and I think that that's just the section that we can handle. And maybe our new focus would be getting another section of road to adopt, to further keep us busy and-
Mr. Mumgarth.
What kind of trash are you finding down there?
Well...
We found, like, cigarette boxes. We found, like, we find, like, Cubbies, you know, those drinks that- those large drinks. We find cigarettes. We find, like, chip bags, everything.
Are you finding anything that tends to have a lot of stuff coming from one place that maybe we could go back to that place and tell them that their customers are contributing to our litter?
There's a lot of beer cans.
Yeah, a lot.
Don't know where those are coming from.
Okay.
But we also find, you know, if there was a car accident and the glove box happened to-
Pop out, we find those things.
You know, I found, like, whole groups of insurance cards. It was like, kind of like, hmm. That's kind of scary.
As you're doing that, if you can identify places that seem to be contributing to the litter, let us know.
We will. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate the work you guys do, too. Thank you. Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Begin my report this evening with an update. Last time you folks met, you issued a notice to terminate to LARM, the League Association of Risk Management. We provided the proper notices as required by statute. Wanted to fill in a couple of blanks. LARM has raised our rates 32 percent in the last three years. That's certainly one of the reasons that we feel like we needed to go out to market. There are several other service-related issues we're concerned with, but if you just think about the dollars and cents of that, that's one of the issues. We do have a consultant that we've hired jointly with a couple of other cities that's shopping our business around specifically our workers' property casually, along with the opportunity of creating a separate pool with those particular cities, if it's financially feasible. We believe that legally that is proper, and that consultant will come back with that report. But I think it's also important to note that in the last month, four cities, Papillion, La Vista, Hastings, and Columbus, have all issued notices to terminate to that particular agency. And so three of them, in particular Papillion, La Vista, and Hastings, represent 27 percent of their revenue. So there is some serious issues there. And so we certainly have a year. We are under contract with them for another year. But if you have any insight, or as a council member want to offer opinion, please give us a call. But that's certainly something we're very concerned about. The second issue, Mr. Mayor, council members, is 911 discussions. It seems like that's going on forever, and it is. If I didn't fully report to you, about two months ago, there was a study that was commissioned by the Douglas Sarpy County and all the communities to determine if there would be any cost savings. The University of Nebraska, actually, Public Policy Institute completed that study and submitted their findings. And what they found is that there is, not a surprise, substantial savings if we were to build a 1911 center, instead of 2911 centers in the Omaha metropolitan area. As simple as that sounds, how that would be operated is very complicated. We are continuing to meet, when I say "we," the cities of Sarpy County, with representatives from the city of Omaha and Douglas County to talk about how we can best serve the citizens and create efficiency and savings over the next few years. And so, and that is- it's a marathon project, but I think it's heading in the right direction. And I'm happy to report that all the people are still at the table. Not always agreeing on how it should be structured, but we're certainly trying to represent Papillion's best interest at that table. To conclude my report, Mr. Mayor, we just put up within the last few days on the city of Papillion website, a series of four one-minute videos that promote the city of Papillion. They- there's a welcome from the mayor, there's a quality of life, I think, a parks and recreation. They're very well done. And so I would encourage not only you, but your constituents to go in. And it's really just a nice little snapshot on what we've been doing the last few years in the city of Papillion. Finally, I did email you, council members, earlier this afternoon, that we'll be licking the stamp on the fall edition of the 2013 City Matters newsletter. You have a- an electronic version for a preview. And so your constituents will be getting that in their mailbox here in the next few days. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Is Dr. Stromeyer here? I don't see him. We just appointed him to the Board of Health. I was just going to introduce him. Thank him for his continued service. Next is item D1, Ordinance 1673, An Ordinance to Amend the Papillion City Code, Chapter 158, Sewers, Section 14, Sewer Use Fee, Residential and Commercial Users in its entirety, by providing that all sewer use fees shall be approved by resolution and provide for an effective date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilwoman Klug. Next is item F1, Resolution R13-0039-07, A Resolution to Approve a Settlement Agreement and Release and Payments in the Amount of $5,000 to Papillion Medical Building LLC for track number 21, and $10,000 to Midland's Professional Center LTD for track number 24 for the settlement and dismissal of their condemnation appeals for the Washington Street, 84th Street Reconstruction Project from Cedar Dale Road to Capeport Road. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R13-0039-07?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Next is item F2, Resolution R13-0137, A Resolution to Approve the Renaming of Triangle Park to Veterans Park. This is introduced by Councilman Steve Ingberg with support of Councilman Gaines. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R13-0137?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion. Ms. Klug.
Thank you. I just would like to ask for a correction of minutes from our meeting. I noticed in there that in the discussions, when Councilman Gaines was speaking, it said this was his idea. And I was in that meeting. I know his statement, and it's hard to hear on the tape, but I know his statement was that Councilman Ingberg had originated the idea and had come up with it. And I know in discussions with Jason earlier, that was also what he would like to have represented in there, because it was Councilman Ingberg who located- or who realized the need for this and the recognition that we would like to give all the military and the community. So I'm assuming this is the right place to let that be known.
That's the minutes of the Public Facilities Committee meeting?
Yes, if we could have those updated.
We will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council comments? Mr. Ingberg.
I just wanted to thank Councilwoman, excuse me, Klug and the Public Facilities Committee for processing this through so quickly. I think as time goes long, assuming I'm stick around a little longer, I would like to meet with Tony Gow eventually and make some changes and convert it into its more appropriate use, maybe as a memorial park for veterans.
Very good. Thank you. Any other council comments? Please vote.
Sixty A's, zero N's.
And we'll work on the appropriate way to do that renaming, so it's not just change the sign out. So we'll work with you on that. Next is item F3, Resolution R13-0140, A Resolution to Approve a Memo of Understanding with the Papillion Recreation Organization, or PRO. This was tabled from the last council meeting, because I think a PRO representative wanted to be here. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R13-0140?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have a PRO representative?
His daughter had a soccer game, and he was gonna try to be here.
Okay, his daughter had a soccer game, and he was gonna try to be here. Looks like the game went long. Do we have any opponents?
I think Panco's here.
Do we have any council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. I want to thank Nick Panco from PRO for that. Next is item F4, Resolution R13-0151, Public Hearing and a Vote, A Resolution to Approve an Amendment to a Special Use Permit to Allow for a Generator to Be Placed on the Existing Communications Tower Site on the Property Legally Described as Tax Lot 14, Section 19, Township 14 North, Range 13 East. Generally Located at 5316 Cornhusker Road, the applicant is Justin Anderson, Verizon Wireless Generator. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? Is the applicant here? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. My name's Justin Anderson. My address is 9900 West 109th Street, Suite 300, Overland Park, Kansas, 66210. Be happy to stand for any questions. It's not a very exciting-
I was gonna say, since you drove all the way up, do you want to take a minute and just give an overview?
Sure, absolutely. So this is an existing wireless tower, and Verizon is simply wanting to add a generator to their site, as they have been doing across the nation for emergency needs. We've agreed to all the staff comments. There'll be landscaping, screening the generator from the residences to the west, and that's about it. So not expanding the compound or anything of that sort.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anybody against? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R13-0151?
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, contingent upon staff comments.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Mr. Jaworski.
I'd like to talk to you before you leave. It's not about this, it's about something else, so. It's as easy as you want.
I'll stick around.
We'll keep that in the minutes. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty A's, zero N's.
I think he wants a deal on his cellphone plan or something. No. Next is item F5, Resolution R13-0152, Also a Public Hearing and a Vote, A Resolution to Approve a Special Use Permit to Allow Body Repairs of Permitted Use on the Property Legally Described as Lots 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, and 12, Block 5, South Papillion, Generally Located at the 307 South Washington Street. The applicant is Dingman Investments LLC, Dingman's Collision Center. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? And I believe the applicant is here. Do we have any proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record as well.
I'm Boyd Dingman, Dingman's Collision Center. My address, 3510 South 144th Street, Omaha. I don't know if you would like to see some pictures of what we're doing.
If you've got them, go ahead and pass them.
Would- should I put them on here?
It'll be up in just a second.
We'll skip through some of them. This is our family. We are a family business. Family is right here tonight. And one of the things that I've said in the past is-
Mr. Dingman, can you pull the microphone towards you a little bit, because we do record this and televise it? Thank you.
One of the things I always say is our name is Dingman, and we are proud of it. And we want to protect our name and do what we can to do the best we can in this new location. Here's a picture of what we're working with and what we want to buy. And here's a little shot. Somebody's using it for a personal car lot there. Hopefully, we can take care of that. It's a pretty weedy area. Hopefully, we can- we'll redo all that parking lot and make this all look nice. There's just more parking lot stuff. Here's what we're looking at doing. And all the windows in the front, we're gonna replace those. They're the big windows. Instead of the big ones, we're gonna have three in each section, which will hopefully make that look a little nicer. Stone around the bottom and an ephesus at the top. This is some signage of what it'll look like. And that doesn't show it up here. There will be a ramp that goes all the way down to the south side for handicap. This is the- that would be the north side. We will take that full-service sticker off. I've heard people call it the sticker building. This is the ground sign. That's not where it will be located, but that's the sign. This is our location on Saddle Creek. And that's the interior. And here's our store on 120th and Maple. And this is our reception desk at Maple. This is the old Cougar Lane bowling alley that we redone. And I don't know how many remember that. This is the reception area there at the 144th location. This is a picture of it during the daytime. And this is it in the evening. We move all the cars in in the evening. During the workday, this is what the shop looks like on the inside. And then in the evening, all the cars pulled in, we get a load of cars in there. We do use- we are one of the first, if not the first, in the Midwest to start using waterborne paint. And that's eco-friendly, I guess. And so the car manufacturers, they've been using it for about 15, 20 years. We've been using it for about six now. The paint booth, it is- it has filters to grab the overspray paint that would miss the car. And so what goes outside is smell, no particles. And this is just a picture of the building again. Any questions that-
Mr. Mumgarth.
Over here now. As I understand it, this is an additional location. You're not closing any of your existing locations. How many employees will be at this location?
I think, right away, probably six to seven, and then eventually, maybe 12.
Okay, and those will all be additional employees that-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And another thing, I've got two Papillion people that will be on our staff here. And would you guys stand up? And they are- they've been with me for a while here. And Tony takes care of our systems and with making sure that everybody's following the directions and so forth. And Bob, he will be our local manager here. And he's from here. His kids go to- went to school here. And his son is here. He's still in school. He works at the Dairy Queens.
Ms. Klug.
Yeah, could you put up your signs again for me, please, Mr. Dingman? Specifically, the one that you said this isn't where it's going to be located. It was a ground sign? I'm just asking about that, because I know we've done a lot of work on making sure that our downtown really looks amazing. A lot of our downtown businesses have been improving their storefronts and that. And I just wanted to more, I guess, direct a question to Mark with regards to, does this follow or where they are headed with it? Is it going to fall in line with the vision that we have been asking everybody else to fall into line with?
I can tell you that we haven't reviewed a sign package yet. Any sign that would be installed would have to get a sign permit and meet all of our design requirements. At a glance, it's a monument sign. I can't tell you how tall that sign is, but it would have to meet all of our requirements. The special use permit that you approve is for the use. You can only put additional requirements on the property. You can't waive any zoning requirements. So in that sense, you don't have to worry about this sign being approved and not meeting any of our code.
Okay. I guess all I'm going to do directing to you, Mr. Dingman, is that I really do want you to work hard with Mark and with our other downtown businesses. They've been working awfully hard to make sure that Papillion is continuing to improve, making it very pedestrian-friendly, encouraging more and more people. And I really want to encourage you, as I'm sure you do, to make sure that you're partnering with that and helping to improve and continue on with the vision that they're already putting forward. You know, I know your lot looks a lot different than some of the other businesses, so this probably is absolutely okay. But please really do do the due diligence to make sure that we continue on the path that they have already set ahead of you.
Councilwoman Klug, I do want to give a little bit of an assurance that Mr. Dingman's been having a lot of pre-meetings with Mr. Sturzmann, recently with Mr. Arnie as well. So a lot of that cooperative work is going on, and I think he's been demonstrating that. So hopefully that helps you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gl- oh, go ahead.
Would it be all right if I showed a print of the outside there?
Sure.
What we're-
Maybe.
Is that what's on here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, they do have a copy of that.
All right, okay. You can see over in that corner where the sign- where the sign is, is over in the corner. And there's- we have a lot of green in that area. And then further to the east.
Put it down.
There it is.
Hey, Mark, can you zoom that in a little bit?
So in this area here, where the bushes are, those will be six foot tall. Not immediately. I think they give us four years to nurture them up there. And we want them to look good. As I said, this- my name is Dingman, and we want it to look good. I'm from a town of 2,000, and I moved to a big city of 8,000. And then we moved to Omaha. So I know what it's like to be in a smaller community, and I just want to keep it looking good. So all these bushes will hide the- any of the vehicles that have damage. It's gonna take a while to get them there, but we will work at that and make that happen.
Mr. Glover.
Do you have a timeline on this project, what your expectation would be?
Yes. I've- if we get your blessing tonight, I'm gonna have a meeting with my contractors. And we want to get the parking lot completed, the exterior completed, before it gets cold. We want to be up and running. Try to do that before the first few years. So it's a big project, and I think we can do it.
Good.
Is that your-
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? And if you'd state your name for the record as well, and who maybe if- who you're representing.
Kim Ayler is president of the Historical Downtown Papillion Business Association. I'm here with several other members, and we're here in support of Dingman Collision. We've actually had the privilege of having Mr. Dingman attend our past several Downtown Business Association meetings. We've gotten to know him. He shared with us his vision for the corner of 84th and Lincoln, which we're very excited about. It'll be a nice addition and a wonderful improvement to the aesthetics of downtown Papillion. We also feel that he's a team player, and that he'll be a great community supporter. So we look forward to having him, and we think his business will not only be an addition to our Downtown Business Association, but as well as a great addition to the community. So.
Is that the first time the associations actually come to the council and spoke as an association?
Yes, this is our very first time.
On a night of- thank you for coming together.
Thank you.
It's an important voice, and I think we learned a lot over the last year to two years of how to communicate with the downtown business. And the downtown business have done a lot of work for the association. And I think that shows the importance of that, of them to be able to come together and represent their views. So thank you, guys. Most everybody that's here, I think, represents the executive board. Do we have any other
Hi there. My name is Thad Hamilton, and I have a business at 213 South Washington Street in downtown Papillion. There are three main reasons that I am in favor of this special use permit. First reason is it's never good to have a vacant building. There's weeds growing in the parking lot right now. The building is really not maintained very well, and it just generally creates an unattractive situation. The second reason is that Mr. Dingman, what, you know, what he brings to Papillion, he's shown his plans, as you guys have seen, to the members of the Downtown Papillion Business Association, which I'm also a member of. And as you could see, you know, he's resurfacing the building and doing the landscaping. And just generally, I mean, I really think we have a great opportunity to have that corner- look a lot better. Also, he's bringing, obviously, employees and hopefully many customers into the downtown area, which creates more commerce and activity. And the third reason, which I think is actually most important, it's my opinion that you're really not going to have another good opportunity for a really great occupant. And the reason why is unfortunately, it's in a special flood hazard area. And it really creates a lot of requirements for its future use. And probably the biggest thing on that is that there is a requirement that over a 10-year period, you can only put in 50% of the value of the building, which, I'm not talking the value of the building and the ground, it's the building only. And so if you really look at the situation that it's in now, it's a building with a concrete floor and metal sides, and, you know, it's really just going to be difficult. I think there's a lot of people who maybe assume that you can kind of go in and just put business offices or a restaurant or something of that nature, and it just, you're really going to be limited by that amount of money. It's just really not feasible. Your only way around that is to dry flood-proof the building. And I've had personal experience with that with my building, and it's very costly. And frankly, because of the nature of this building, it's really just not going to be feasible for him to do, to dry flood-proof it. So really, what you come back to is some sort of garage use, some sort of body shop use. And so in my opinion, you have a choice here between somebody who is kind of forced into a situation really where he's going to have to, and not to say that he wouldn't do this anyway, but, you know, the city is really making him put in some landscaping and improve it. But your other situation is maybe have another mechanic come along or something of that nature and just really go cheap. You know, just paint the ground and make it just really cheap looking. So I hope the city council sees this as an opportunity to bring a good businessman in. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents?
Gene Fall, I also have a business, 245 South Washington, across the street from that building. And I just, when I drive north through town, I see, you know, La Vista's kind of like losing some stuff in that shopping center area that they have there where Kinko's is and everything. And it's just, it's kind of sad to see all those empty storefronts. And, you know, I've been neighbors when Dick Ruby had it for 30-some years, and, you know, it was a nice viable business that was there, and I'd like to see another one back in there. And I think this could be a good one. And I think it would benefit our community a whole bunch as far as making downtown look alive again in that part of town. So I'm for it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Seen, oh, go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bob Darmeyer, 904 East Aberdeen Drive, right here in Papillion. Currently, I work for the 144th Street location, part of the management team. Boyd asked that I come up and introduce myself as, when this facility comes online, I will be the manager of this facility. I'm proud to say that I have lived in Papillion for the last 20 years. My kids are, this is their town, this is a town they know. My daughter currently goes to Dome, and she hopes to come back and teach here in the Papillion School District as an elementary teacher. My son works two doors down at Dairy Queen from this location. I've coached many teams on pro, baseball teams, over the years. So when I heard that Dingmans was looking at this location, I can't tell you how happy and excited I was to bring the Dingmans to my friends and neighbors here in this town. On a personal note, the years that I've worked for Dingmans, I can tell you, they're good people, good work ethic, and when they do something, they do it right. You will not be disappointed. And I would invite any one of you, when we're up and running, please stop by and see what it's like to step inside a modern auto body repair facility, it's quite amazing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Note for the council that there are two letters that were at your desk as well that were, we'll keep, we'll make sure those are referenced in the minutes as proponents as well. Do we have any opponents? Anybody want to speak against? Seen none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 13-0152? Wait. Give that one to Mr. Ingberg. Do we have a second, Mr. Glover? Okay. We do need a motion to amend Resolution R 13-0152 to include the following contingency. In accordance with Section 205-243B, 90-degree parking access from Jefferson Street shall be permitted, and such parking stalls shall not be used for outdoor storage of damaged vehicles. Do we have a motion to amend? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Sixty A's, zero N's.
Motion to amend passes, we'll have council discussion on the motion as amended. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty A's, zero N's.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next is item F6, Resolution R 13-0159, a resolution to approve Sarpy County's request to vacate Cornhusker Road from the Easterly right-of-way line of 132nd Street, Easterly to a point 147.5 feet west of the southeast corner of the southeast quarter of Section 19, Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6 p.m. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 13-0159?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty A's, zero N's.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports, and I don't think any have met. Do we have any comments from the floor? I noticed, Mr. Panko, did you arrive? We passed your item earlier, did you want to come make any comments? You don't have to, but...
My name's Nick Panko, and I'm representing the Papillion Soccer Club, and we do appreciate the opportunity to make this donation to the city. I was at a soccer game coaching, so that's why I was a little late. We do appreciate the opportunity to have the space available as well to take care of and to grow, and to grow our club and with all the kids that we have, so.
And just for point of reference, counsel, that was item F3 that we had already voted and passed in regards to the memo of understanding.
So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the partnership. Do we have any other comments from the floor? Seen none, any comments from council? Few updates from the last couple of weeks. I met, I spent some time with OPPD, they had a community leader meeting at Bellevue University, give updates on what they're doing, especially down in this service territory, so I attended that. Mr. Hoynes, Mr. Sturzmann, I also met in regards to some city policies about plating of tax lots, some of the old tax lots that exist, and consistent policy there. Also, along with a number of city staff, attended the ribbon cutting for Platinum Fitness up in the Technology Park around the medical buildings. Also attended a tour of a manual pathways facility and the services that they're thinking about for the southern area of the metro, trying to keep a lot of our folks in their homes instead of going to care facilities. They've got some pretty exciting programs coming out that I think will benefit the city. Mr. Hoynes and I met with Ann Ames and Jesse Ostike with the Papillion Community Foundation about continuing the partnerships we've got there. I think we have a strong relationship going, and they're doing some exciting things that I think will benefit us as well. Mr. Hoynes and I met with members of the leadership committee about the next round of the Papillion Leadership Academy. As you know, we wrapped up the first session, and we're talking now how to revamp that and learning from the people that went through, and we'll be launching that probably in December. We'll be working on the next couple of months of that. Mr. Hoynes and I also attended the United Cities of Sarpy County meeting, we hosted that here at City Hall. Several of us attended the Omaha Storm Chasers playoff game. They won that, so they are the PCL champions, and in fact, they're playing right now for the AAA National Championship against the Durham Bulls, who are the Tampa Bay Rays affiliate. So they're about an hour and a half into that game, have not heard a score. Mr. Hoynes, Ms. Myers, and I attended a luncheon sponsored by the Omaha Business Ethics Alliance, and the topic was, does Omaha have moral courage? And that was an interesting debate, very interesting debate. It also was the guest speaker at the Bellevue Off-At Kiwanis Club giving them an update on Papillion development, had a lot of discussion about downtown and the historical association that was formed. Mr. Hoynes and I also met with Senator Jim Smith to start talking about some potential items for the legislative agenda coming out. So if you have thoughts about legislation, now would be a good time to be bringing those thoughts forward as that gets put together. Some interim hearings are being held by the senators. Mr. Hoynes and I also met with Commissioner Kelly, talked about some cooperative things with Sarpy County. We had a meeting with SID 38 about their maintenance of their community well system and some things they want to do there. If you did not hear, the announcement was made also that Sarpy County won the Travelers' Data Center, another $200 million data center. That project will be at 144th and Schramm, so it's in between Papillion and Springfield's ETJ. So it's a county project, 190,000 square foot building. And then I also had a meeting with Mayor Dill of Springfield, talking about some joint planning and looking at that areas between our ETJs of common, maybe a common future land use map, so we can adopt the same one in the developing community then, we'd see how that develops and not worry about whose jurisdiction that's in. Also, want to remind you of the videos that Mr. Hoynes mentioned that are on the website. If you have Realtor friends or association with Realtors, share that video with them. It really promotes the community and explains why Papillion. So as a Realtor is working with people of where to locate it, really tells our story nicely. Mr. Magid, who's in the audience, you might want to take a look at that and share that with your community as well. I think it'll be useful. I think that is most of the updates. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Ingberg? Second by Councilman Jaworski, please vote.
Sixty A's, zero N's.
We are adjourned, thank you.